Okay, we begin, this is a reminder, this is a remote meeting until it's using Zoom. Pursuant to one R S A, section four oh three dash A. Meeting for first sixteenth, this meeting proceeding and unless the board's. You have the right to hear and see what is being said and to look at the service and offer. Please notify that you're unable to see or hear something. Now the plan of if any plan of work have any potential conflicts of interest or where they will disclose disclosed. Prior to the changing adherent or action on issue. All speaking will be asked to state their name, address, and then proceed. Sole discretion of the chair, money may be limited to five minutes per speaker. Reach item the app asked to describe the project after the chair will ask. The project to speak followed events and by either for and or against want to ask a question or no comment. Anyone who wants will have the opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions to and through the chair who will then one point either ask for the applicant to respond. Chair may after testimony has concluded, so as to any questions that are raised public or board members. Bruteness on civil behavior, class. Not be tolerated, gave us prefer the chair at his this terminate the hearing and reschedule on a date. And chair at his discretion will repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual indicate that he or she agrees with the speaker. Close in a public hearing, the chair ask there are any comments and then the app will be allowed to make a single rebuttal lost to the testimony which was provided. The hearing portion of the meeting is closed, chair will additional public comment, however, of the board at the chair's. They ask the applicant or a member of the to respond to your question, this will not be open. Plan of board decisions are based on whether an applicant has provided some evidence to mitigate. State and federal laws in this regard, testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of projects in light of Sanford's vision, site plan, shore. Or zoning laws or other relevant regulate. After the board votes on emergency, it will vote on the written findings. Since substantially affect any appeal also as a matter of courtesy, ask those attending meeting. Not good findings for the project. After the plan board makes his final decision, any reconsider. Next regularly scheduled meeting, anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she will within thirty days. Cities or one that says a company are available for viewing on the city's website, planning and development department's office at Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding, great to see and hear what is happening, we welcome public. With that, I think we can do a roll call.
Mr. Chair.
Who's here? Yes.
Um, you're breaking in and out, or at least I'm hearing that, can you reposition yourself maybe that can get better reception?
I'm. Position myself from here. How's, is anybody audio problems?
I hear it. Mister Chair, it's reminiscent of what I've heard, a, uh, somebody's using a computer for both audio and video. Uh, which we encountered when we first started doing this. Anybody else hear that?
Like echoing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was echoing.
And sometimes cutting in and out.
So, okay. There's a twang to it.
Too much I can do about it tonight, but after tonight, but. We'll have to.
Okay.
Have to struggle through for this. If we can just do a roll call vote to establish who's here?
Sure, um, Jay.
Here.
Um, Diane.
Present.
Jack.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Lenny.
Present.
That's five, uh, present, uh, that is a quorum, um, uh, both, uh. Well, Crystal is excused and we're down one regular member because Jennifer has moved. So there is a quorum, Mister Chair.
Okay. Okay, that bring next item agenda, it's the twenty planning board calendar.
Um.
I don't know if you want to bring us.
There's a calendar that has been presented, uh, for the twenty twenty one, um, slate of meetings. Um, uh, it was submitted to the board and published, uh, so that people would have an opportunity to raise any concerns if there are any. Otherwise, they, uh, the meetings are scheduled for the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month.
Okay, so do we need to vote to accept that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I'll make it that we accept the, uh, figure as presented.
I'll second it, Diane.
In a vote.
Jay.
Yes.
Um, Diane.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Lenny.
Yes.
That's five vote void, it's unanimous and the motion passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, that's, that's for the December seven twenty twenty meeting. Any questions or comments or no show?
Question to accept, Jack.
Second, Diane.
Mister Chair, you'll have to determine who, uh, got the seconds on that.
Yeah, I think Diane out by a millisecond. I'll give it to Diane. Okay, hearings and business.
Uh, you have to vote on it, Mister.
Oh yeah, that's right, we do, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Would you like me to read the roll call, I mean, read the rolls again?
Sure.
Jay.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Lenny.
Yes.
That's five oh and the motion passes.
Okay. And now hearings and business, first item business is T P D construction for Torrance Street. Beth, do you want to, so maybe Molly kind of orient us on what this is?
Happy to do that, um, so the applicant is requesting approval for minor subdivision, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong project, hold on just a moment. Okay, um, the applicant is requesting approval for preliminary major subdivision, um, and major site plan to, uh, redevelop and construct. Two new three-story market rate apartment buildings on property owned by T P D Construction and V B R A Properties LLC. Uh, it's located, uh, at twelve Robert Street, um, and actually comes out onto, uh, Main Street as well. Um, the site plan review committee did review this project yesterday, um, and they did, um, uh, present a recommendation to the. Um, uh, site, uh, to the planning board that they accept the information in the report and grant the waivers. Um, and then find, um, and then approve the preliminary subdivision with a series of, uh, conditions. Um, I do want to point out however, that, um, uh, there was some major discussion about the access and, uh. Parking and circulation layout, um, which we can get into as, um, uh, we go through this review. Um, in essence, what the site plan review committee did was recommend that, uh, this project go forward to the planning board. Um, that the applicant lay out the two alternatives that are under consideration and the planning board provide as much feedback as is comfortable providing at this point. Um, so that the applicant can then go back between preliminary subdivision and final subdivision. And do a refinement on the two alternatives and hopefully be able to work with staff and come back with a single proposal. Through the final subdivision process, um, um. I think that's probably a reasonable orientation, I, I know there's a public hearing associated with this project. Um, and, uh, there are a number of, uh, issues of concern or, or of, you know, concern for discussion. I do have a letter to read into the record from one of the abutters in the public hearing and, uh, following the public hearing. I do have, um, a communication from the police chief that I would also like to read into the record.
Okay, I don't hearing on our agenda, this, it just says new business, a public hearing tonight?
It is a public hearing.
Okay.
It's under the heading of new business and public hearings.
Okay. All right, is Mont here tonight?
I'm Jeffrey Leva from Civil Consultants is here representing the applicant.
Um, could you take a few minutes, have a project for us?
Sure thing, um, Molly, can I share my screen?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, so, okay, so, um. What I want to do is share this, if everybody can see my screen, um, this is the, uh, site plan for the project. What we're proposing to do is, um, construct a phased market rate apartment project in the urban zone. Um, and this is going to be geared towards, uh, young professionals, developed, um, people coming in, uh, that want to live downtown. Uh, to be able to have the pedestrian access to move back and forth around, uh, in the area and, uh, to revitalize these two existing, um. Lots that are, are developed, both have, uh, pavement and impervious coverage that is pretty much a hundred percent of the area. Um, again, I mentioned that this is, you know, a re, a redevelopment, the project is to phase. The construction of the two buildings, um, partly because of the, um, paving and disturbance moratorium on Robert Street. So the intent here would be to do phase one and work on the twelve unit building which fronts on Main Street down here. Uh, and then, um, do the site work to accommodate the parking and facilities for the twelve unit building. And then also, and then start to work on the, um, twenty-four unit building, uh, knowing that by the time we get there. The moratorium will have expired and we work appropriately with the, uh, utilities in Robert Street for the connection. Um, we've designed our site here to have in, um, two parking spaces per apartment. The ordinance requires one point seven five, uh, spaces per apartment. We are having, uh, two here so that we can make sure that our designs, um, fit onto the property. And that we're not going to look at, um, issues with overflow parking onto the, the city lot that's right near. Um, right near the police station, um, uh, we have pedestrian access around the property through existing sidewalks and. Uh, sidewalks and sidewalks that we will, uh, improve during, during our work. Um, and then we also have, uh, the idea and we can talk about it further as the board goes through. Um, around items that came up with discussion, uh, during the technical review, uh, yesterday morning. And the, the discussion of connecting the, uh, twelve unit parking, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit. Um, the twelve unit parking that were proposed need to have our interconnection and break through into the, the existing parking lot. So that have our traffic come out to this intersection, um, right now, there is an agreement between the city and the, um, owners. That went through during the sale was to, to allow, um, pedestrian, uh, vehicle traffic between the two lots over city property here. Between the Ballenger lot and through the property onto, onto this, what we're proposing here is not to have that vehicular, uh, connection. But to maintain it, maintain that as a pedestrian trap, uh, can, connection and then have our area. Uh, our access come off through here and down through, uh, the exit onto the Main Street way to get out to, uh, the center of town. Um, I can go over the discussion and it's up to Beth if she wants me to go over that now or wait until we move further into comments. Um, after we get some, uh, review of, of our initial proposal. Um, but to talk about the discussion from the police chief and, and his concerns and what we've tried to take a look at. Uh, to accommodate vehicular, uh, emergency access and items like that, uh, we've talked about, um. Uh, issues with, uh, a butter's concerns for, uh, for traffic, uh, for headlight and, and traffic in this urban zone. Um, there is in a butter letter from a person that is up here, I believe up here on the northwestern side of the property. Um, and what we're looking to do, uh, depending on, on the board's influence, uh, is to, uh, the figure away. Um, if it's through, um, a low fencing or low vegetation along this area to help provide the buffer. Uh, for headlights and, and access and screening on that side, on the side between the residential butter and the parking lot. Um, but what we're looking to do is, is have this project fit in with the comprehensive plan and looking at, um, you know, a, a, a nice. Uh, redevelopment of, of market rate professionals, uh, apartments, this is a mix of one and two bedroom. Uh, apartments in these two, uh, structures, I think that's it, I hope everybody can hear me. Um, I can keep my screen up or shift to other ones, I think that what I may do is share another picture. Um, so that everybody can see, this is the, uh, rendering of the building, uh, to be proposed, this will be similar. With the roof line similar to the twelve unit building that will be, uh, constructed along Main Street. The building, the twenty-four unit building has a flat roof, I have, um, I can share pictures for the public, uh, that was in your package. Uh, that shows that, but, um, I'm not sure, Mister Chairman, how far you want me to go, um, but, uh, we, I can stop here and, and address some questions.
Okay, what I might do at this point is open up the public hearing. And some, uh, some comments from the public, I think that's what we'll do right now, I'll look here and open. And is there anybody who would like to, in favor of this? If you would like to speak, just use, uh, raise your hand feature and. And if there's anybody that is for the project, um, feel free, uh. Let us. Any comments for or against? I hear in any, Beth, do you have a couple of, of letters that you'd like to record?
Yes, I would, um, uh, the first is a letter, uh, from the, uh, butter to the project, um, um. It is, oh, wait a second, I just pulled up the wrong one, um, it is, um, from an. Um, Jennifer Rollator, um, and it reads as follows, to the Sanford Site Plan, a site review committee and planning board. Project regarding the project at fifteen Robert Street, uh, Sanford, Maine. Uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the committee regarding this project. I purchased my home in good faith, knowing that the property across the street was a commercial garage, perhaps there should be some noise. Excuse me, perhaps there would be some noise during normal work hours, eight AM to five, but after that, the parking lot would be empty. I would have used of my backyard and depth with a relative sense of quiet and privacy. The area at my knowledge is, was not zoned for apartments, looking at the proposed plan, I will have twenty-three parking spaces, eleven parking directly. Pointed at my bedroom, living room, kitchen and backyard, with twenty-four apartments, assuming a minimum of four occupants each. There will be at least a hundred and four occupants coming and going from this parking lot at all hours of the day and night. My quality of life will be severely negatively impacted as will my property value. The traffic at the intersection on Main Street and the intersection of Robert Street, especially coming and going from the garage across the corner is substantial. The noise level as well as ease of access to my property will be negatively impacted. As it is, I cannot have my windows open during the day and some nights due to the noise level from the garage. Imagine the impact with all the traffic and people coming and going in the parking lot. Has anyone considered the traffic and congestion during the summer once the ballpark opens? The amount of foot traffic and noise on this corner is already excessive. I believe the city must give some consideration to the current occupants in this area. We may not be the wealthiest people in the city, but we have worked hard for what we have and our quality of life should be considered. If my objection to this construction is discounted, please at least consider a six-foot solid barrier fence alongside the parking spaces facing the property at twenty Robert Street. This will cut down on noise and car lights shining into my home at all hours. It will also offer me some form of privacy and security. If possible, it would be great to place the fence around the entire parking lot and divert the exit from the property near the police department to the existing exits of municipal parking area. This would cut down on traffic and noise directly into my backyard and would have less of a negative impact on my property value. Thank you for your consideration, Jennifer Rollator. Um, I, I do have to make just one comment, this property is zoned for apartments and was even in the zone that, um, uh, the urban zone replaced. So this has been zoned for apartments for a long time, um, okay, so that was that one, and then would you like me to read the chief's, um, communication directly? Or would you like to hold off until you close the public hearing, because this is really not a public hearing item, it's a communication from a staff person?
Okay, yeah, we can wait on that, I guess. Um, is, is there anybody else waiting online? Hello, is there anybody waiting online that would like to make comment?
I'm not seeing any hand raises.
Okay, um, with that, I will declare the, well, I guess do we want to keep the public hearing open, we're going to keep, this is going to come back to us, right?
Um, it is, you have your choice of either keeping it open or, uh, what you can do is close it and tell me that you want to schedule a public hearing for the final subdivision. That is a discretionary, um, element, um, but if you tell me that, um, now, then I will make a point of making sure it's advertised for public hearing when the, uh, final subdivision application comes in.
And why don't we do that, we'll do another public. One comes back to us.
Okay.
All right, so we'll declare the public hearing and I closed.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, would you like to read Chief Connolly's comments to you at this point?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, um, uh, Tom emailed me yesterday after the site plan review committee meeting, um, um. And he said, I just wanted to renew my objections to the, the design presented by the applicant. As I related to you in April twenty twenty, the applicant contacted me and showed me their design that included some use of the spaces in the municipal lot to obtain the necessary parking spaces. At that time, they told me that the design was meant to increase the aesthetics of the property and that they did not want a driveway between the two buildings nor did they want a fence. I presented my arguments to them, um, the first was that the concrete divider be left in place and that the lot should not be connected. That there was already a connecting driveway access between the upper and lower lots and that this driveway could be used to facilitate overflow parking in the upper lot. That there was already an existing curb cut into the proposed new parking lot from the, uh, police department driveway. And that existing curb cut should remain as the primary entrance into the new property. Next, that the municipal lot was used primarily by the police department and sweet memories and that it was absolutely necessary that all spaces be available. Especially during the winter for police vehicles and employee vehicles to park so that the D P W could remove snow from the planning, uh, the police department's back and side lot. Um, next, the pla, the police department also uses this lot for parking when we host a training. When we do host training, most of the spaces are occupied by police department guests. Um, another is that the tenants of the building will use the municipal lot for overload, overflow parking. Whether there are signs prohibiting parking or not, it is simply human nature, people run stop signs, they park in no parking areas and they drive faster than posted speed limits every day. Why would drivers living in this project be any different, even if we can tow trespassing vehicles, towing cars is a pain in the butt. Next, that I wanted a fence on two sides, six feet high with the vinyl weave or some other similar fence to ensure some level of security for the municipal lot. The two buildings are going to attract a lot of people to the area and I did not want people wandering in and out of the parking lot where my officers park their vehicles and where the police department vehicles are parked. Especially at night and early morning hours, unfortunately, cops are a little paranoid and they would not feel very good about parking their personal vehicles in an area where a lot of people could walk through and possibly damage the cars. It also seems that an awful, and now we're going into a new paragraph, it also seems that an awful lot of leeway is being allowed to this company to use city property and make a design that utilizes the existing police department driveway to their benefit. This project will add a lot of traffic to our driveway, there are probably twenty-five to thirty trips through our driveway every day. When you add in the trips from these buildings, I can only, I can only speculate that the number of trips will double at least. There are many occasions when a police vehicle cannot exit onto Main Street and make a left without having to wait for someone, wait for sometimes two minutes. If there were four cars in line trying to leave, it would be almost impossible for my officers to exit onto Main Street unless they use their emergency equipment. I would hope that the city department would have at least an equal say on how this private entity will utilize our driveway. Nothing in my request will prevent this development from being built, the only changes required would be to redesign the parking areas to my satisfaction. And to provide some modicum of security for our parking lot, they have been aware of my issues since March twenty twenty, they went ahead and designed the project exactly as they originally wanted. The only change is that they no longer are requesting that we share the municipal parking lot with them, could you read this email to the planning board, regards and thank you, Tom. Um, I, one thing I, I do want to, uh, make you aware of is that, um, since I received this letter, uh, or this email. I did have a conversation, um, with the applicant's, um, consultant, uh, this morning or early afternoon. And, um, I suggested that, um, if the planning board, uh, does approve this preliminary subdivision tonight or even if it doesn't. But if it does, and with the instruction that they, they want further work done on this issue and to be resolved and brought back to them at the final stage. But one of the things that I would suggest we do in early, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, is have a meeting, uh, with the applicant, um, the police chief. Mike Cassely and Matt Hill, Molly and myself, um, so that we could get all the issues on the table, um. Uh, one of the things that I, I think I spoke with you folks about this at the last meeting when we were talking about another proposal for an urban infill project. Um, and you've had this situation occur in other places in the urban zone. When you're talking about a compact mixed-use zone, um, uh, first of all, things are tighter, um, that's just the nature of the beast. Um, the other thing is that you have to pay considerable attention to, uh, being a good neighbor. Um, and, and I'll remind the board that you, you've had this experience in other parts of the urban zone and Jack actually referenced this at the meeting, uh, yesterday. And then I'm not going to put words in his mouth, he can speak for himself on that, um, uh. So anyway, that's my proposal, um, clearly there are some other issues that have been raised by the chief and I, I know that, um, the consultant is, is prepared to speak to some of those. Um, uh, this evening, um, and perhaps show you the alternative, um, approach to the site design, to see the access points and how it would impact the, uh, the parking lot. There are some things that are requested that are not responded to yet, um, but I did want to at least get this into the record for, for now so that you would have that in front of you as you're going through your review this evening.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Um. Okay, do we have the, those all, those, uh, all plans?
Yes, I, I do, if I can go. Sure, can, I'm, I want to kind of step everybody through a little bit as we move forward, um. So what we have here is, is the design as proposed, and when we met with the police chief back in the spring. Uh, we had a different design that had, uh, eliminated all of, eliminated the, the islands and areas in this space. And had just. And had just a direct connection through, uh, and the connection for the two lots so as if it was one long parking area. And at that time, we did have um, notes and indication that we were looking to use some of the spaces out over in the area where my cursor is, is floating. Um, and so what we did is we, we did take the, some of the comments of the police chief into, into effect is where we didn't get rid of that. We moved and made sure that we had enough spaces on our two properties for, for the um, tenants. Um, we wanted to propose to have a no resident, no parking tow way signs on here. This lot is already indicated that there's no overnight parking, that there's no parking between, um, I wanna say it's between ten PM and six AM in this lot. Um, so what we did is at the time was we, and the chief had, originally we had a, just a split rail fence. Uh, between the parking lot on the Ballenger side and this, and the city lot. Um, we had changed that to call out more of the same type of metal, uh, three to four-foot metal fencing that is around the existing police station to make it consistent. And then have our access be in here with no parking. Um, again, what, we've, I've talked with the owners here, what we're looking to do is to either a- a- assign parking spaces for the tenants or to be able to have some sort of sticker or placard or something along those lines and we're working that out just to, to verify. But our idea here was looking at the downtown development was to um, keep it consistent. Um, make this interconnection here so that we just use this one curb cut through on this side. I completely understand the police chief's concerns about o- overflow parking and, and getting into his, in, into that side for his staff and, and being controlled there. Um, but you know, one of the things that we wanna do is make sure that we had enough parking in excess of what the ordinance states. So that we can handle our tenant and visitors for, for that. So we've got m- more spaces than uh, so that each person has two spaces plus there's room for visitors. Uh, what I'm gonna share now is the plan that we developed coming out of the meeting yesterday. How this would potentially impact uh, emergency access coming through. Um, with the interconnection, the emergency access is, is, is easier here. Um. So this is the, the redesign with not creating the connection to the city lot. Reworking the, the curb cut that's here on the property as it stands. Um, and then you can see this kind of dash line. This is, this is a, a fire truck trying to get, gaining access into this area and where you can see it is, it is, it's fairly tight. So this is, is the other concept. Um, it makes it more difficult for snow removal. Um, we did not still with this one, I, I think our intent here is we don't wanna have vehicle access between the two par- parcels on this side. And keep, we wanna keep it, um, all the vehicle access and movement inside the, the parking lots and then out onto the driveway. Out onto the city property that creates the, the access road that comes to Main Street and the access city road that come, that makes its way out to Robert Street. So thi- this is our option here to have pedestrian access between the two. Um, we still have enough spaces in this lot, so each of the twelve units in this building will have at least one space on this property. Um, the second space would then have to be up and over onto the larger Ballenger lot. Um, but this is, it was the start for the redesign. Um. Ideally, we would like to uh, pursue and work with the police chief to make sure that we cover his concerns. And his, his safety aspects and making sure that there's control over that. But it, it's our opinion still is that we feel that the best connection would be to still use this existing curb cut through our, our intersection here. So that's where we're at. Um, as, as Beth indicated, um, what we wanna do is I, I wanna uh, write up a formal um, response. And generate some additional questions from the police chief's uh, email that came through yesterday. And get that and then have a meeting where we can sit down and talk about it. And, and hopefully come to a um, a, a resolution that is equitable for, for everybody and kind of fits the, the long-term scale needs and design development for this urban area for the project.
Okay, um, I guess we can open it up to questions from the planning board.
Lenny, this is Jeff.
Anybody have any? Yeah.
Who owns the driveways in front of Main Street and Robert Street? Is that city-owned?
Yes, that is city property.
And does the police station have parking other than this? Other lot?
A- as I understand, they have parking along the, the front of the station that's shown here on the left of the page. And then they also have a lot that would be to the south off the, the bottom uh, left corner of the property. Um, that, that there is parking on that side as well.
Also, the upper uh, corner, upper left corner of the property, there's, you can see an entrance there. There's a, a smallish lot on that corner for the police that's on police property. It's really upright and in the very corner of that picture.
Is it, is that r- right there where I drew the arrow? Is that the, the lot that you're talking of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought it wasn't working. Um. The applicant mentioned something about ga- or sorry, not the applicant, the police chief's comment something about gates. The south area where most of the police vehicles are is gated. Um, I don't think I've ever seen the gate closed. Um, the north, I believe it's the, the northwest part where the other lot is. Um. I, just from observation here and there, I, I don't think I've ever seen that lot full. Um, if that's where police people, uh, police officers park their personal vehicles and that, perhaps that should have a gate on it too. I don't know. If that's the concern about um, people using that lot. But I also raised some concerns about um, this at the uh, DRC meeting about whether police vehicles are gonna have to go um, through these roads, these city-owned roads, um, if they leave the um, police station for an emergency. And I've seen them do it and they've, they go through those roads and they go out with their lights on sometimes. So I understand that concern.
Yeah, I, I think, this, this is Jeff again. Th- th- I think one of these that we also wanna talk about that is the, um, you know, the access. Uh, when we have that meeting with, with the police chief and, and um, the public works department about making sure that we can um, develop a, a, a scenario that makes sure that uh, this area as best as possible doesn't hinder the emergency uh, flow for the people that need to get out in, into, into city to respond to something.
I will, that in the packet, there is permission to use the driveway off of Main Street to access the police station. Um, there's evidence of a deed of easement, although I do not have the deed of easement in hand. But there is permission that was granted in two thousand nine.
Hi, this is Lenny. I have a question. Um, is, is that restaurant still in business? Off that driveway?
I believe it is, Lenny.
Yeah, and they park in that spot.
On the same driveway?
Yep.
Okay, so, so they're, so they can park in that spot and they're using the same driveway?
Predominantly their parking is in, is in that city lot that's right here. No question. That's where the, a lot of their restaurant parking is.
Jeff, could you identify that on the plan again? I, I couldn't see your cursor.
Yep, um, sorry, my cursor's kinda small. The, the, um, the lot here i- is.
Great, yep.
Yeah, th- th- this is, yeah, that's the lot that, that um, that you, you um, that the restaurant uses as well. And that's overflow parking. And it, it is restricted. There's, the, down here on the, on the sign, as you come out by, on the opposite side and the stop sign, there's, there are two signs. There's one that says there's no winter parking for, for storms. And then that there's no overnight parking from ten, I wanna say it's from ten PM to six AM in this lot. So it, it's restricted that way too. Again, we're not, we don't, we're not proposing to, to use um, to use that lot. We're just hoping to, to have our access, our exit come out for, for tenants to come out, come through and come to this one controlled exit here um, on this. And again, you know, I know uh, eventually I think Mi- Mike will, will, and it, and Matt will chime in about the, you know, the concerns about traffic at Main Street and Robert Street. And we have some ideas um, about, you know, about helping to, to steer everybody to use the, the Main Street driveway out to avoid that Dunkin' Donuts intersection.
I guess one concern I had was maybe this is an unintended consequence of this project, but if that municipal parking area is made for the police department use only. Are we gonna be affecting another business off that driveway?
Mr. Chair, it, and since I've seen uh, this come into being, it, the idea was it to be a through road or, or an access way, you might wanna call it. It's not been an accepted road. Um, and then uh, I've used it quite, quite a bit to avoid the uh, the churning movements and the delays that you run into. If you're traveling on Main Street going north and you wanna go left on Robert Street, this is a, a, a frequent bypass for a lot of people. So it's, it's been sort of uh, innocuous uh, until now. Uh, there, there's never been any questions about uh, how it's gonna work. Uh, so as a result of this project, uh, and you know, there's several, it, the project is a, a project that's raised uh, some initial uh, discussions and, and uh, things that we, we're trying to work out uh, in site plan review committee. Uh, when the time is right, I'd, I'd like to just say a couple of things about the, the traffic impact on the project, whenever you'd like.
Okay, um, does anybody else having the planning board have any questions?
Lenny, can I have uh, just one more question, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Parking lot that's labeled municipal parking lot, the one we've been talking about, who, so the city actually owns it? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
Okay. My question then is, when the police station was built, was there something in their deed that said that they have outright use of that lot?
No, from my understanding, in two thousand and nine, there was permission granted to use that driveway. Um, there's evidence of there being a deed of easement, although I do not have one in hand.
Okay, cause I do remember seeing something i- a, a note or something in the police station lobby. That says, if you're coming in for training, don't park in front of the police station, use this lot. So. I don't know, kind of stumped on this one.
May I address that, that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, as far as what any uh, legal lease paper uh, documents would say, since its inception, uh, the, the the deal is that the police station parking that's right in front of their door, to the very left of the, of the screen, that's theirs completely. This shared parking deal of some kind is going on and it's just come into being, uh, possibly as a result of uh, a, a deed of easement. Uh, I believe it probably is. But uh, that's how it's worked all these years, is that the, the general public and uh, the police station even uh, has assumed or, or, you know, taken uh, s- some of their, some, well, taken some liberties, uh, for want of a better phrase. They've, they have uh, people parked there at nighttime, overnight, some of the overnight personnel, and they also do some trainings there. The lot is available and uh, there's only general use there other than the specific use uh, that has been taken by the restaurant at the bottom of the screen. So during the daytime, there's a shared parking there for the restaurant, uh, some use by the, the uh, police station personnel. And uh, other than that, uh, I, I don't, I've never remember seeing that place being, or that lot being uh, overused. So that's just how it's been. It's been uh, it's kind of worked out for those two entities, the police and, and the restaurant.
Okay, cause only, only once. I'm sorry, Mike. Only once have I ever seen that lot completely fold with cars.
Sometimes uh, City Hall, uh, if there's issues with the lot or, or it's just a lot of people showing up there for a, a function or an event, uh, sometimes we've used it too. To walk over.
Yes.
Yeah, not too frequently though.
And, and I, and again, this is Jeff Aliva again. Um, I, I think it's also important to note is that this, the, the proposed connection does not eliminate any of the spaces that exist now. There's no change to the spaces, the number of spaces in that parking lot. The only thing is that we're just having um, the, the driveway connection, so to speak, through that curved entrance that goes into the lot. So no change, no usage, no um, um, no, no reduction in, in existing parking spaces.
Hey, Lenny?
Yeah?
This, this is Jack. At the uh, site plan review committee yesterday, the police chief was concerned about people messing around with some of his employees' cars. Um. Which, after thinking about it, I mean, I don't think I would go into a police station's parking lot and mess with employees' cars, but that was one of his concerns and I think he, he wanted uh, fencing up to keep people from looking over it. I don't, I'm not quite sure that's gonna stop people from, if they're intent on stealing something or messing with someone's cars, if that's gonna do anything.
I certainly wouldn't wanna mess with.
What's that?
I say, I, I certainly wouldn't wanna mess with their cars.
I don't know, Beth, can you, can you uh, elaborate on that?
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't wanna be caught walking around that area. Certainly, I, I wouldn't consider that a public area. Certainly walking around the back or sides of the police station, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna be doing that anyway. But I, but I wonder if it would make more sense to have some kind of a, uh, like an automated gate or something, just isolating the employee parking area. Have the employees be able to uh, maybe, yeah, maybe like beep themselves in, open the gate, let themselves in and then close the gate behind them.
Or they could have something like uh, the airport does where you have a card lock and it opens up automatically and closes.
Yeah.
I think that would be a solution, but we also need to consider that we have thirty-six two-bedroom units coming in. So that's potentially about eighty, eighty-five tenants that are going to be there. It's kind of a civilian watch on the street. Um, you'll see people coming in and out of their apartments. So it would, it would kind of deter a criminal if they were going to, you know, rob a, a police person's person- going to, you know, rob a, a police person's personal vehicle. They have, you know, lights on in the apartment, seeing people walking around, the area being more densified, being more populated. It, there's evidence that that deters criminals, um, although they have military vehicles parked there, which would deter me if I were a criminal. So, um, I think that those are two components that should be considered when we're talking about safety risks in the area.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yeah.
If, I, I don't mean to, um, disrespect the Sanford Police Chief's comments, but everyone who parks their vehicle anywhere, whether they're a police officer, a fireman, or a pharmacist, takes risks when you park your vehicle at work with things happening. Yeah, there are, are ways to prevent it. Um, he's got cameras on the buildings. I'm sure there's a few that shoot that way to that parking lot. Um, but I, yeah, I'm not gonna mess with a, a police officer's personal vehicle. That's just common sense to me. But, um, they can't always prevent it everywhere.
I would just say, as, as a side note, I've been attending the ballgames there for years, and there's been people parked up and down the street. Uh, they tend to park in the, uh, the City Hall parking lot. I don't really see a lot of people walking into the, uh, you know, the police station parking lot, or even parking in that area. I don't think I've ever seen that. So I'm not sure that foot traffic would be, at least from what I've seen with my own eyes, I don't see foot traffic as a problem in that area.
I don't go to the ballgames, but I've seen a lot of people, when the games are on in the summer, that do walk down that way, like down Robert Street. Have I ever seen them cut through or gone through these, um, men, um, city-owned roads with the police station? No, I can't say I have.
I haven't. Mr. Chairman, if I may? Just, just, uh, you know, don't forget, right now, that's a wide-open asphalt area with a vacant Ballinger's Building, and during the summertime, I have seen people walk through there. Uh, you know, with, it's real easy in the evening, six o'clock or so, to, to cut through if you're coming that way. I think, uh, things would be a lot different, obviously, with, uh, with residents' cars and, uh, apartment buildings in that area.
So you're suggesting that actually having residents there would reduce the amount of foot traffic, people just randomly crossing through?
Well, it could be, you know, residents that live there, um, and, and yes, you know, that some people might go, go by there. I think the chief was really concerned about late night and in the wee hours, when it's dark and everybody's in bed. Uh, he's talking, I think, about, uh, overnight, uh, and, and a night shift for his overnight employees. Uh, he feels his, his, uh, employees' cars might be, uh, very vulnerable there with, with, uh, connection through that, uh, other parking lot. I mean, God knows what's, what's, uh, type of thing he's seen. Uh, he's, he just felt he had reason to, uh, what he wants to do is to keep people from going near his, uh, employees' parking, uh, park, uh, park cars. All the part, the police parking is off the screen. The, the, every day, every night, uh, weekdays, they're parked on the side of the police station, which is in white on the, the left of the screen. So the, the few times when he does have his employees use that, uh, uh, central parking lot, uh, I think that's his concern.
So we need to find some way to, uh, address that concern?
I have a hand raise. I, I have a hand raise for Matthew.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
All right, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I actually agree with a lot of observations that have been made concerning, uh, circulation and, uh, the fence. I, I feel like, uh, the point, uh, I believe Molly made about the fence actually kind of, uh, permitting bad behavior instead of deterring it might be a good one. If, if I wanted to sneak into that lot in the middle of the night and vandalize a, a police, police officer's personal vehicle, it would be really nice to have a, uh, a screen behind me so nobody from the residents could see me doing it. Um, I feel like, yeah, you know, if there's more foot traffic, it's gonna open that up for more observation, and, uh, more observation means less bad behavior in my, my experience. Um, you know, in, in discussions with Mike and, and Jeff on this one, uh, a lot of it comes down to, uh, access management and good access management. Um, you know, our primary area of concern, uh, for this project is really the intersection of Main Street and Roberts, which is a known high-crash location. Uh, it's been a high-crash location, uh, I believe nine out of the last twelve years. Um, you know, some, those are some of the concerns that, that, uh, that Mike has brought to the table. Uh, but certainly, um, you know, I, I guess I, I would wanna talk to the police chief a little bit more about, you know, their perception about, uh, egress from their facility. Um, you know, the, the fire department is a good example. They get a call, and their engines have to raise that, you know? Uh, does the police department, yeah, they come screaming out of the police station every once in a while, but it's not like, uh, you know, a three-alarm fire or something. If they need to get through, they turn their siren on, and they, they get by the four cars waiting there. Um, otherwise, they need to kind of wait their turn. Um, I, I don't believe we have, uh, a study on, uh, the level of service of the police station access onto Main Street. Uh, but I know, we've, we've looked a lot at Main and Roberts, and, and, and I've actually, oh, obviously done it quite a few times, but one of the, one of the big concerns there is the proximity of that intersection to the Main and Washington signal, and the fact that that Main and Washington signal doesn't really have a, a gap in it. You can basically be facing oncoming traffic from southbound Main Street. I guess the order is, you're facing southbound traffic from Washington first, and then without any pause or delay, you get the, the Main Street southbound traffic from, from the north end. So, uh, that makes that turn very difficult. Uh, I believe the analysis that we currently have has that left turnout from Roberts onto Main is a level of service E, uh, falling into an F with the projected volumes in the next twenty-year period. Um, again, I'm not really sure what the level of service, uh, from the police access drive on the Main Street would be, but I guess it, I'm, I'm assuming it ought to be better. Um, now, as far as the internal circulation, um, you know, I, I really appreciate, it sounds like, uh, Jeff has gone through some iterations, uh, to try to address this. You know, uh, what I would like to see, and, and this is a long shot, and I think, uh, Jeff kind of got right to the crux of it. If, if the city and the developer were to enter into some kind of public-private partnership, they might not really, uh, what I would like to see is there would be a nice, like, new layout that we could actually increase the total number of parking spaces. But, you know, Jeff's taking a look at it. He doesn't really think we could generate, I, I believe he said, more than four additional spaces, uh, by doing something like that. So, um, unfortunately, the way this is laid out seems like a missed opportunity. Um, but, yeah, I, I, I've also parked in that parking lot as an overflow for City Hall, um, and the path I took as a pedestrian probably would've taken me right through that security fence, uh, most times. Um, there's no pedestrian connectivity coming off of Main Street onto the police access drive, and then crossing over to that sidewalk that connects over to, uh, Roberts and the Rowleyers' property. So, uh, that's something to consider, too. There's really kind of like a, a dead end when you get to the pedestrian connectivity, and maybe that's something the city needs to address in the long run. Um, that...
So, so Matt, are you suggesting that we need to look at maybe better pedestrian walkways through this property?
Well, I just point out, there is a point of disconnectivity. I mean, it comes in off that, it comes in off of Main Street. There's a couple nice crosswalks to the restaurant and the, the city lot, and kind of, it dead ends there. There's no, there's no connectivity to the police station, uh, that's on the, it, uh, I, unless I'm mistaken, is there, is there a, uh, is there a crosswalk?
Yeah, there, yeah, it's not shown on our plan. I'm looking at the aerial image right now, but there, there is a cross, a hatched area that goes from here to here.
Oh, excellent, okay.
That would connect people off to this sidewalk and run through.
I'll put it on my column.
Yeah, so my, my next plan will, will indicate that. Our guy, our surveyors picked it up. I'm looking at the aerial image, so there's all the, the dashed, um, same comments, uh, for crossing over here, and then also that parking lot.
Oh, good, excellent.
I'll, I'll have that added on to the plan, um, the next time it, it's brought here to the board, so everybody can, can see that connection, uh, to that.
You know, and if, if, you know, if I was in the developer's shoes here, uh, I'm just bringing this out there, and I don't wanna add complication to it, but I would look at closing off the access, uh, vehicular access on the police station drive, and then I could get, you know, six to eight more parking spots if that was just a straight shot in from, uh, you know, the corner there. Does that make sense? Do you see, do you see what I'm saying?
I think I see it. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we can, we can, yeah.
If that was just one long parking aisle, but I mean, again, that would probably re-easement or something, but, you know, there's some, there's some, some parking spots and...
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, you know, that's neither here nor there.
Matt, are you suggesting that's the, uh, the, uh, the way out to Roberts Street? Are you suggesting closing that for parking?
Oh, the, uh, where, oh, against Roberts Street? Well, that was initially one of the things that Mike and I had discussed, is whether it would be feasible or not to close that. And, uh, I believe Mike discussed it with Patrick Cotter, uh, the fire marshal, and he, he really felt strongly that that should be preserved for, uh, emergency access. Uh, but, you know, access management might tell you that that's, you know, that's a driveway within fifty feet of an intersection. It really, we could, you know, again, it's, it's kind of a moot point because the fire marshal wants it there, but, uh, and it's necessary for him, so...
Yeah, it's for, for his ladder access truck. Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think one of the potentials there, Matt, is to at, make sure, is that we add a sign, um, near there that says no right turn coming out of that side. Um, you know, I, I think over time, the tenants will get used to the fact of not, not going to that Main Street, Roberts Street intersection, but in the meantime, adding that and maybe potentially other signage that indicates the way to control traffic, to steer them away from that intersection to go through that area, so that they're, um, uh, if they're gonna head towards the south side of town, um, to move out to the Main Street side, or, or come out on the Roberts Street and make a left and head down by, uh, Goodall Park and head out that way.
Right, and I, that's something I, you know, I come out of City Hall a lot, and I, I wanna, you know, perhaps take a, a left onto Main Street, and instead I head down, you know, like Shaw Street, or I go down to Twombly and make my way up from there. But certainly, if you were a resident living there, you'd figure it out awfully quick. Don't go out up to Roberts and try to take a left onto Main.
Matt, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there any future plans of making a no-left turn from Roberts onto Main?
Um, that wasn't part of the, the PPI study that VHB just did. Uh, I know that idea's been kicked around a little bit, but I, I don't know if any, uh, plans know. Um, the, the best and greatest thing we really had was, uh, talking to VHB about potentially, um, adding a delay in the signal at Washington and Main to kind of artificially create a, a pocket, uh, like a time pocket where you, you might, uh, be able to make that left turn. You know what I mean? Like, when I said, when you, when you take a left off of Washington onto Southbound Main Street, like, the timing of the light is such that there's no pause between shutting off that movement, and then now you have got full southbound traffic coming right at you. You know, if, if there was...
Washington Street traffic... Sorry, Matt, go ahead, please.
Yeah, there's, there's just no gap in there right now, and, uh, that's part of what makes that left turn really difficult.
The traffic study kind of, uh, indicates it backs up. In other words, if the traffic keeps backing up, so that never, it never, uh, makes the traffic go through when the light is green, and the last car will still be there, and you turn on the spigot back at, uh, at Roberts Street, and it never clears, no, hardly ever totally clears during the peak hour. It's a tough one. That's the dilemma. We, we kicked that around, Diane, and, uh, we, we realized that, that to make this project work, uh, uh, we would, the best thing we can do that we could think of at the time was to, like Jeff says, try to use signage and whatever we can to, uh, in a, in a common sense way, keep traffic from funneling up there, going by City Hall, and, you know, going to the right and going by City Hall, and trying to take a left-hand turn at Main Street. It just is gonna, uh, be problematic. So, the, the best strategy we could come up with so far was to try to encourage, uh, the traffic from the development onto the Main Street side. So in other words, from the building close, closest to Roberts Street, we want to encourage the traffic to go back and around the curve to the left and down the rest of that, uh, police station access road to, uh, to Main Street, and then try to take a left at that point.
I agree. Um... I'm just, I guess that's something we'll have to look at in the future.
Yeah. I mean, excuse, I haven't heard from Jace or Tom yet. Do you guys have any questions?
No, I'm, this is Tom. I'm looking at the, the aerials as well, and the street views, and, and I mean, it, it does seem like a, a, a sound layout, the way it is, the way it was proposed. Um, I think we're getting hung up on the municipal lot, and, you know, who should be parking there, but in reality, it's a municipal lot. It's open to anybody, uh, except during the hours or when we have a snow ban. Um, and, and they're not proposing that any of those law, those spaces be counted towards the standard requirement. So, i- it's almost moot in my, in my thought.
Jace, do you wanna weigh in?
Oh, this is Jace. Um, I'm of the same opinion.
My thought was maybe they could explore some kind of a controlled access gate system for the employees, maybe in a fenced-in area for the police station employees to park in.
This is Jace. I just don't see it being an issue. Um, I, uh, again, it's a police parking lot. I don't think, uh, people are gonna be too interested in breaking into vehicles with a, a direct view of the police station.
I would hope not.
Well, in any, any thought, any discussion on, uh, uh, fencing for the police lot, it doesn't really belong on this, I don't think it belongs as part of this discussion, because really what we're talking about is a municipal lot. Yes, the police use it, but it is not the police department's parking lot. So, you know, if, if we're gonna talk about, you know, gates and fences and controlled access, that's in a, that's a totally different project, in my opinion.
Well, I think what we're looking at is cause and effect. This project, I think the need for something else. So I, I think it is relevant in that respect. I think it's, I think it needs to be part of the discussion. Whether something comes out of it or not is up to the police department and the city, but I think it's a good point to discuss.
But the neighbor was concerned about people peeing into her, uh, her house. She asked about a fence, but if, if you're talking about a two- or three-story hu- uh, apartment building, which is Phase Two, a six-foot fence is not gonna pe- keep people from looking into her kitchen, bedroom, whatever, which is the same thing we were looking at down on, um, the Rotary there with the, the TPD apartment house.
The people can do that now, leaving the ballgame.
Yeah, the ball, the, the roundabout.
Yeah, so people can look in her house now when they're leaving the ballgame. At nine, ten o'clock at night.
ten o'clock at night.
She's worried about people in the apartment building, which is, I mean, it's phase two, which may or may not happen, but that was one of her concerns. But if you get two stories, six-foot fence doesn't do much.
No, that's a good point.
If I could, if I could sort of, uh, step in at this point, um, I, I think actually, uh, she was asking for the fence, um, to screen her, um, and I could be wrong. She may have gone beyond this, but I took it to be that she was concerned about headlights coming in from the parked cars. Um, um, and I guess I'd like to talk about fencing in general. Like, you know, you've heard me talk recently about, um, uh, urban infill and the fact that we have to kind of recalibrate our thinking about, uh, design away from the more conventional, more suburban, um, uh, approaches that we've developed our standards for over the last, um, you know, fifty, sixty years, um, to think a little bit differently about those standards in an urban environment. Uh, you, clearly you have to, uh, you have to make sure that things are safe. Um, but you also have to think, make sure that, um, things are attractive, um, that they respond to, uh, pedestrian movement. Um, and in, in addition to the fact that you have these, these compact issues when you're dealing with a mixed-use urban zone like the urban zone, um, you also have to think about those good neighbor standards, which is why I think that the planning board spent a good thirty minutes talking about that buffer between the TPD apartment building down at the roundabout and the adjacent neighbor. Um, you know, so we're, we're gonna be struggling with these issues, um, uh, with each of the projects that, um, come forward, um, in the urban zone, particularly those that are, are infilling, um, in, in sort of holes that have developed over time. Um, so, you know, my initial reaction to all of these calls for fencing, six-foot solid fencing, is that, you know, what the visual impact is gonna be, it's gonna be, it's, it's really gonna break down this issue of, of sort of free movement and, and designing, uh, pedestrian pathways that are, are short, efficient, and, uh, follow attractive routes. Um, and, uh, you just get this feeling that, you know, if we were to see these on these site, this type of site, that, you know, we're not gonna be happy with the end result. It, it's particularly talking about chain link fencing with vinyl being sort of threaded through it. It's gonna look very industrial, very uninviting. And so we have to rethink how we provide that protection that's needed to keep people in the right places without being really ugly. Um, and so I asked Molly if she would actually, um, look into this issue. I think a lot of it, she's done some stuff with fencing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, to let her share that with you. But, you know, one thing to keep in mind is you can create a fence, uh, by creating a living hedge. Um, and it's a heck of a lot more attractive to see a Viburnum hedge or an Azalea hedge, or, uh, I don't wanna go too far because we also have to pick something that's gonna be able to live in this kind of dry environment with an awful lot of salt. Um, but there are species that do well or that can live well in that environment and look very attractive, um, and serve the purpose of keeping people from sort of cutting through. It does require ongoing maintenance, but honestly, if you've got a nice attractive fence, that's gonna require ongoing maintenance as well. Um, so if you could just bear a little bit of indulgence from me to ask Molly to share some of the work that she's done on this in the last few days, um, actually in the last day and a half, um, then I, I would appreciate that. And, and at some point, if you'd like, um, I would like to also talk with you a little bit more about this sort of, um, sort of the difference in the urban standards. I don't wanna, I don't wanna lecture you, and I think I've, I've given you enough of it today and at the last meeting. Um, but this is an issue that I think the, uh, the, the city staff, including myself and Molly, as well as the planning board members and the rest of the site plan review committee members, are gonna need to do a little bit of step back and, and rethinking about this. Um, we're gonna learn from the experiences that we have of approving and seeing some of these projects built. We're gonna look at them a, a year later and we're gonna go, wow, that was a really great technique. Let's do more of that. And you're gonna look at another one and say, boy, that was a bust. It really didn't do what we thought it was gonna do. And we really ought to be careful the next time somebody proposes that. Um, so I am encouraging, and I know this is, we're doing this on the developer's nickel. We're learning from their, you know, from what they're building. Um, uh, but this is a part of the partnership. I think that, um, everyone is a little out of their element with this. Because Sanford hasn't seen a lot of this kind of development for an awful long time. Um, and, uh, but, you know, we, we've got this one, we've got the, um, uh, you know, we've got Sixty-Two High Street, which is on the agenda in just a little bit. Um, I know that we've got the proposal for the Rob Rankin Bill, uh, property over on the other side of, um, School Street, on the other side of the park. Um, uh, right now, uh, Sanford's apartment market is relatively hot, um, you know, by Sanford's standards. And, um, we're gonna see, we are seeing pressure for more, um, multifamily development. And, uh, and like I said, I encourage you all to kind of keep your antennas out there and view this as a little bit of a, a learning process. Um, uh, so anyway, with that, if, if I could just ask your indulgence for, um, Molly to sort of take the, the mic from me and, um, and if she's, uh, prepared to put up some images to do so.
Sure. Um, prior to me sharing these images that I found, I just wanted to make it clear that, um, the member of the public firstly had an issue with headlights shining into her house. And secondly, with all of the pedestrian activity that's associated with the cross-section of Roberts and Main, which if any of you have been to City Hall at eight AM, you'll see that that Dunkin' Donuts is, you know, a, a note of activity. And we should all make note that the developer is actually proposing a solid fence between the apartments and the Dunkin' Donuts and the old Verizon building. So right, right along that lot line, they, they are proposing that. Um, in respect to what Chief Connolly had brought up, um, I found, um, if you don't mind, Jeff, I'm just gonna take over screenshot real quick so I can show, so I can show these images. Um, I found a couple of alternatives, um, for, for an actual fencing. There are, um, cattail style fencing, which are open metal, completely impede, um, movement between two sites, but have more of a sculptural kind of, more, more inviting, um, tone to them because they do have that negative space. If we're still completely tied to the chain link ideal, there are, um, hedge flats that you can braid into the chain links. Um, it's, it's a synthetic material that you can, um, braid in there that kind of gives the appeal of a living wall. Um, following that, we could do something similar to what you see at a trail hell, trailhead with a wood double rail or a wood with rope. Um, these don't really do much in respect to impeding, you know, movement between two sites, but it certainly delineates the two. If we were more interested in doing a very solid fencing, I would recommend doing something that had a bit of visual interest, um, something that was, had both negative space and had a very solid fill. Um, it might be more expensive, but it would certainly be attractive. And then if we were going to go the way of, um, knee-high shrub lines, do anything from your prototypical peaking list, um, or, or anything waist-high like this. Or we could look at a mixed media combination. You see a landscaping rocks here, you see a knee-high wall, and then you see a series of trees. This might be a little too avant-garde for the area, but, but you kind of get the picture. There are a lot of alternatives to just providing a, a single solid barrier. Um, so those are just, in six examples, there are, you know, hundreds and hundreds of them. But I would definitely ask that we take into consideration these alternatives, whether it's just you putting up a vinyl slatted chainmail fence.
If I could put in my two cents worth on the walls going up there, I think that would really make it, it's a worth thumb compared to the rest of the downtown. And I think where security is needed, I'm not sure that the solid wall will fall. Not from a standpoint. I don't know if anybody else wants to.
Well, I was, I was wondering if you'd like to, uh, take a look at what the recommendations were from the, um, uh, site plan review committee. Um, uh, and, and that might, uh, maybe help clarify, um, if you're comfortable with those recommendations and ready to take action. I do wanna point out that it's about ten minutes of, uh, of eight. And, uh, you do have at least two more items on the agenda. Um, if you're interested in doing that, I'm happy to sort of read them off one at a time so that you can, um, uh, that you can evaluate those, if that works for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, let me just make sure I've got the right one here. This is also preliminary subdivision. So this is not going to be the last time you see this. That's right. That, that's, that's basically why I sent this anyway to report. Okay, I think I've got the right project here. Uh, TPD construction. I'm sorry, I have too many files open. Okay, so, um, essentially, um, what the, uh, some of them are very, very straightforward and others are a bit more complicated. So the first recommendation was that there should be a condition that, um, all four handicap parking spots, uh, be shown on the plan. So to be compliant with the ordinance standard. Um, the second one, and please stop me at any point if you want to discuss any of these. Um, the second is that the fire department connection be shown on the plans for the sprinkler system. Um, the third is to show the one-inch water service line for Building A on Robert Street on the plan. And if it's not to be reused, that it would be properly abandoned, um, according to the, uh, the standards assigned, uh, or the, the water district standard. The next is a minimum of a six-foot fire service line for both buildings is shown on the plan. The next is that a minimum cover of five feet, six inches for all water services be shown on the plan detail. The next is that sand used for burying water piping shall be washed or screened sand and stated as such on the plan detail. Um, the next is that stop signs and pedestrian signs be considered in the design. And it's my understanding there are, um, a few of them that have been added already. So you may actually see them in the revised plans. But, um, we'd asked, um, we'd asked the consultant to go back and reexamine this and make sure that all of them that are being proposed are put on the plan. Um, the next was to indicate the proposed grading, um, on the plans where the grades are proposed to be changed. Um, and then the next one was a formal traffic analysis, uh, be provided from a main registered engineer. And it's my understanding that, um, the consultant has already had some preliminary conversations with both Mike and Matt about this. And, and, um, we're not talking about the full-blown traffic analysis that you normally see when you have projects that are generating more than a hundred trips during a peak hour. Um, but, uh, there's a fair amount of good information that was gleaned from the PPI. And so basically it's assembling a bunch of that information. And I think the focus is primarily shifted generally from the entire project to really looking at that intersection of Main and Roberts, as, as both Mike and Matt have discussed. Uh, the next one that is, uh, both Buildings A and B will have knock boxes with two sets of keys in each, and buildings be kept accessible year-round, um, for the fire department. Uh, the next is that the applicant give an access agreement, uh, to the city for drainage structures on the Building A property. The next is that the applicant inspect the sewer lateral connections to verify the integrity of the pipe. And if the pipe is subject to failure, trenchless technology be used to rehabilitate the sewer lateral without open trenching new pavement, uh, excuse me, without, yeah, open trenching new pavement on Robert Street. The next is that the applicant avoid elbows and fittings under buildings wherever possible, and piping under buildings should be minimized. The next is approval from Public Works to excavate roads to install trenching. The next is materials for and installation of all water mains, water services, meter arrangements, and backflow devices must be to Sanford Water District standards and to the satisfaction of the superintendent. The next is that all new or dewatered water lines larger than two inches in diameter must be tested and disinfected in accordance with the AWWAC six hundred, AWWAC six fifty-one, and all Sanford Water District standards to the satisfaction of the superintendent. Um, the next is that sprinkler services will be flushed and tested to NFPA standards and to the satisfaction of the fire marshal. Flushing and testing should be arranged such that work does not damage landscaping or erosion control measures and be timed so as not to interfere with other work on the site. Uh, the next is to provide an AutoCAD submission tied to the main state coordinate system, which is acceptable to the assistant city engineer. Um, the next is to work with the assistant city engineer to establish the amount of the required performance guarantee. And here's the big one. The site plan review committee discussed potential redesign of the access and internal circulation system and chose to forward both options to the planning board for its review and comment on general direction, recognizing that technical review will be undertaken with final subdivision. So in essence, what they're saying is, um, express your preferences, um, let the applicant, um, explore this alternative option, um, have the meeting with the, uh, uh, the pla- uh, the planning, you can leave those right there, honey. Have the meeting with the, um, with the various staff that I mentioned, uh, earlier. Um, and then, uh, hopefully come back with a proposal that's, uh, going to, um, at least meet the kinds of compromises that are appropriate, um, um, uh, to try to meet as best we can the chief's concerns while also thinking about those other elements. Um, um, you know, the other design elements and integration into, um, the, uh, an appropriate urban design, if you will. Um, then that will have to go back through, uh, the site plan review committee, and they will formulate their final recommendation to you for final subdivision. The one additional thing I would strongly recommend, um, and this isn't coming from site plan review, we did discuss this yesterday, but with all of this discussion about fencing, um, I would strongly recommend that this go back to design review committee to review whatever, um, is gonna ultimately be proposed. Not just the locations of the fencing, but actually providing, um, um, the, uh, drawings to illustrate what they're going to look like, um, and sh- and be able to key those to locations on the plan so that the design review committee can specifically focus on that and provide a recommendation. Hopefully that would be done before the site plan review committee so that that would carry through to site plan review as well as the planning board.
Okay. That sounds like a good idea.
I would add that, you know, that one piece of, you know, going back to design review. Um, I even got that in there right now, but hold on a second, I'm gonna add that.
Mr. Chair, may I add a comment on fencing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I just hope in, when we're all considering this, that, uh, snow removal, snow storage, uh, be considered with, uh, whatever that decision is.
Yeah. Um, I guess, Mike, I'd like to point out that the applicant has indicated already that they will be removing the snow from the site. They will not be storing it on the site.
That is correct.
So I guess what we need to get, I guess what we need to get out of this is what, what design do we prefer on the, uh, the parking, right? Is the, uh, the amended plan or the original?
Well, you can actually make that, you can make that choice now if you want to, but you can also, um, uh, hold off and, and ask the, um, and ask the, um, consultant to explore that alternative approach just a bit more. Uh, bring that to that, um, meeting with Matt and Mike and, um, Tom and, um, Molly and me and, and, uh, and themselves. Um, and my expectation is that probably there will be a third, there, there may very well be a third plan that comes out of it, um, which might be a combination of the two or an adjustment of, of one or the other of them. Um, so you can make your decision now. I mean, I did hear three members strongly saying that they preferred the original proposal. Um, uh, the other two, uh, I think Lenny and Jack were not as, as, uh, strong in that statement. Um, but i- if you allow it to go forward to explore both of them at this point in time, we may be able to find that we can address a number of the chief's concerns while still maintaining integrity in the design.
Okay. Does the planning board favor allowing, uh, both plans to, uh, continue through the, uh, discussion process?
I do.
Yeah, I do. I'd rather that the, uh, chief meet with the applicant, the architect and all that and try and come to a. all that, and try and come to a agreeable conclusion.
This is Tom, I'm, I'm good with continuing the discussion.
This is Jase, I'm to continue the discussion, although I am leaning towards the proposed design.
Okay. Diane, were you going to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to see it explored a little further, maybe to come up with a Plan C that might be better for all involved.
Yeah, I agree, I'd like to see both, both designs still on the table, and maybe come up with something different.
Okay. Are you ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, if nobody else has anything to add, I think we can.
You have the, essentially the draft motion I just read, except that I didn't read you the introductory language. If you'd like, I can read that to you, and you can decide if you want to make that your motion, then you can just say that, that motion as it was, you know, the conditions as they were previously read, to save all of our talking. So, the introduction of the draft motion was that the planning board accepts the information in the December 15, 2020 summary report, the site, the December, I'm sorry, I'm writing as we go, 15, 2020, Site Plan Review Committee recommendation. Grants to requested waivers and fines that the proposed major preliminary subdivision application file, number K-30-55, to develop and, redevelop and construct two new three-story market-rate apartment buildings has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance. I'm going to take the site plan stuff out of there because you're going to do that at the final stage. Subject to the submission of information and conditions described below, and then it's the conditions that I read, conditions 1A through H, I think it's A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, no, I, 1I, and then 2 through 11, 13, the last one being, review the proposed fencing and landscape details with the Design Review Committee prior to final subdivision review.
Motion to accept it as read, it's Tom.
Second, Jack.
Okay, we just need a vote?
Yeah. All right, hold on a second. Sorry, I have to get this down. Okay, that would be Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes 6O. Okay.
Are we ready for the next one?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from the next applicant.
Okay. All right, so under New Business File 21-20-S, this is Spencer Hill Estates, Chair Dana Libby.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay, never mind, yep. Go ahead, Dana, I was going to set it up, but you're ready to go, so why don't you go ahead and do it?
Okay, Dana Libby from Conover's, Nancevang, Spencer Hill Estates is back in front of you because Mark would like to ensure that the deed restrictions that are going to be on lots 1 through 9 are not included on Lot 10. So, we've made some revisions to the deed restriction box and, and the Declaration of Covenants that were supplied. The only thing that's changed on the plan is the title block to reference the recorded plan, and the reded areas in notes, item 7 and 8 of the deed restrictions, which basically says that within the shoreline zone, that no vegetation, no ground disturbance is allowed without code enforcement permission. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, there's no public hearing on this, right? Well, this is just a discussion and approval?
This is just a discussion and approval. Should be relatively straightforward if you're comfortable with it. There was a draft motion in the summary memo, if you'd like, I'd be happy to read that.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, there was slightly different in the site plan review. Okay, good, yeah, I've got it. So, the suggested motion is that the Site Plan Review Committee recommends that the planning board accept the information in the, in the December 16, 2020 summary report, and approve the proposed amended subdivision application file number 21-20-S for a 10-lot subdivision.
Okay, if there's no comment, we'll entertain a motion approved.
Second, Tom.
So, that was Lenny made the motion and Tom seconded?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want, do you have any discussion, or do you want to go right into a vote?
Not hearing any questions or any comments, so I guess we can go right to a vote.
Okay, Jase?
Yes.
And by the way, we only have four votes here. Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes 4O unanimous, Diane is refused.
And I should ask Dana, he doesn't have any objection to four people voting on this.
Not now.
Not now, okay. It has to be voted, but...
Oh, boy.
It's a dead deal, I guess, okay.
All right, well, thank you very much. Beth, I'll deliver the plans to signature Friday, seems out supposed to be really crappy tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good. And Dana, you know that we're going to have a little, little time to turn it around because board members are going to have to come into the office to sign it.
Yep, that's fine.
And we're going to need all four of them to do that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, on to old business, the next item on our agenda. File, looks like I-29-69-R, this is for Small Blue Penguin, Chair of J.C. Kavanaugh.
So, Mr. Chair, you'll remember that you had a public hearing, oh, man, I know I checked this with Kate. Kate, was the public hearing closed?
I don't think it was.
Okay, so, we held a public hearing at the last meeting on the proposed minor subdivision and minor site plan to repurpose the former Calgary Baptist Church into nine apartment rental units on property that's owned by the church, but there's an option with Small Blue Penguin holding that option, into nine apartment buildings, and that there is a proposal for 11 parking spaces for tenants on the property that's across the street from 62 High Street, with an additional five parking spaces via an easement on 68 High Street, which is about, I think, 400 feet down the road. At the last meeting, there were a number of concerns that were expressed about safety concerns associated with crossing the street to get to the parking, there were questions about whether or not the parking in front, two or three parking spaces in front of the building could be signed with time limits, 30 to 60 minutes, subject to working coordinated with the Public Works Department. There were a few minor details associated with verifying that there was one additional ADA-compliant handicap parking stall on the site plan, location of a sign on the parking of the 11-unit parking lot indicating that the parking is restricted to residents of 62 High Street, and others would be towed. That gave legal option to be able to tow the, tow those properties. The Site Plan Review Committee recommended basically four conditions, to put the ADA-compliant handicap stall on the site plan, to identify the location of that sign on the 11 lot, parking lot, and then to provide signage limiting two parking spaces in front of High Street frontage to 30 to 60 minutes, and, and the applicant would be expected to pay for those signs. And the last one was to provide an AutoCAD submission tied to main state coordinate system that's acceptable to the Assistant City Engineer. The Public Works Director suggested that there were a couple of things they could do, the city could do to deal with some other kinds of safety issues, like making the crosswalks and sidewalks that lead to them ADA-compliant, and putting some signage up in different places. Rather than me describing that, Matt is here and can certainly talk to those issues. I know there was also a speed study done, and you may like to hear the results of that speed study. Again, Matt would be the one to give you that information. And I believe that Joanne is here and is prepared to show you what they're working on, some of the photographs that they've had, because I know there were some concerns about lighting, and the applicant has submitted some, some photographs indicating what the building looks like at night, there's a lot of ambient light in the area. And also, the Design Review Committee did review this between the last meeting and this meeting, and they did make a recommendation that they are comfortable with the designs that have been proposed. The applicant is proposing, and again, Joanne can talk about this, window boxes on the High Street side of the building, and planters with trellises on the North Street side of the building. With that, I will be quiet, and you can take it where you'd like, Matt, Mr. Chair.
Beth, I just want to mention that the public hearing was closed at the last meeting.
It was, okay, I, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, so it is, it was closed, and I don't believe that we've received any additional commentary since then, Mr. Chair. We did read some stuff into the record at the last, at the public hearing.
Okay, so I guess we can just go into the discussion?
Exactly.
I guess you kind of threw a lot at us, I'm not sure where to start. Maybe we can start with Joanne?
Yes, yes, I could put up the plan.
Yeah, sure.
Here we go. Can you see this, the site plan?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, what we've done, based on the comments we've received, I have, we have one handicap space noted, it'll be assigned here, we put added, there's no power on the parking lot, we're going to add two solar lights, that would come up on at dusk and go off at dawn, but they most, they would have motion sensors, so there'd be low light when there's no activity, and if, when sun comes in, the light would step up. We do, are proposing with a sign that this is private parking, and each unit would be assigned one space, where the, the one three-bedroom unit would have two spaces, so they'd be guaranteed spaces parking in the lot for each unit, and then, oh, let's see, there we go. There. Also, we, based on, we are adding window boxes along the front, under each, there's eight windows on the High Street, we're to put, place window boxes and have planters on North Avenue to, to liven up the, add some green, greenery to this, this concrete spaces here. Let's see. We took some pictures during the night, this is from the parking lot looking at, this is the High Street building, there's a light downward down the street here that helps light, provides light in that area, this is looking up towards North Avenue and High Street, and this is looking at the building itself, and it's pretty well lit at the entrances.
Joanne, the photographs are not being projected, just the plan.
Okay, let's try it again. Oh, no, 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 no. There we go. All right, how's this? Okay, all right, yeah, I'm still learning how to do this. As I said, this is looking up towards North Avenue and High Street, where there's a light where the crosswalks are, down, this is looking the other direction from the parking lot, down toward High Street, where there's a, a light which, just off the entrance to the parking area, and this is the building itself at night with the, off, the entrances are very well lit, and this side gets the overflow from that street light on the corner. I've also, I need to, sorry while I rotate this. There we go. I've also indicated details on the, the planters that we're proposing, and these are the window boxes, they'd be white, and the new planters will be white, too. And this would be a sample of what we're thinking about the light fixtures in the parking lot would look like.
We're missing the photos again there, we're looking at your, your file, so I think you're going to have to click on the ones you want us to look at.
Okay, let's see, I think I... Okay, can you see that?
I see it, I see it desktop.
Yeah, you're going to need to, you're going to need to toggle your screen, so if you hit the share screen again, you'll be able to see all of the different windows you have open on your desktop, and then you'll be able to click on it.
Okay. There we go. All right, I'm looking at the plan.
Yep, yep.
Okay, great. I've also included, on the, on the plan itself, I've incorporated the details for the dumpster enclosure and the, and the planters and the lighting that were proposed, and also the signage, what that would look like. So, I'm hoping, any questions? Comments?
Any questions or comments on the board?
I just have one. The building is what color, Joanne?
It's, uh, beige-yellow color with white trim.
And the planters are gonna be white?
White.
I'm just wondering if the, they needed to be like a different color for contrast or something, so someone doesn't walk into it thinking it's, you know, not there blending in with snow and the white building. Just a thought. Also, you show a picture of, uh, planter that's got writing on it, uh, none of these are gonna have writing on them, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Those are just a sample of, uh, what we are thinking of the, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't have writing on it.
Okay.
Will the planters be removed in the wintertime?
They have the possibility of, of being removed, yes.
Okay, we've talked about the building, maybe should we spend some time talking about the, uh, about the grounds around the building or the parking arrangements or any of the details?
Mr. Chair, would you like to hear from Matt in terms of the, uh, investigations that he's done since the meeting, the last meeting about this project?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Great, uh, well, we made a request to the Sanford Police Department to go and place their covert speed counter out there and found that, uh, pretty much, you know, what you would expect in a twenty-five mile an hour zone, most of the people are doing between twenty-six and thirty miles an hour. Um, you know, that being said, if you can imagine kind of a, a bell curve, if you're familiar with statistical analysis, uh, that twenty-six to thirty is kind of the, the peak of your bell curve and then there's, uh, you know, a lot of people still going even five miles an hour greater than that and a lot of people going five, also, five miles an hour slower than that. So it's, it's basically, uh, what we call a normal curve with your peak around like the high end of the thirty miles an hour. Uh, so it does appear that there is a speed issue, uh, but I wouldn't necessarily call it an excessive speed issue. Uh, they captured, uh, I believe it's four days worth of data here. So from December twelfth, uh, sorry, the twelfth to the fifteenth, so it's, it's kinda partial, it's a total of about four days, but it's probably a partial on each end. So out of that, there were twenty-two thousand vehicles in those four days, uh, so there were eleven thousand, we're doing that twenty-six to thirty miles an hour, just over five thousand, we're doing thirty-one to thirty-five, seven hundred and thirty, we're doing thirty-six to forty, eighty of those vehicles, we're doing forty-one to forty-five in a twenty-five mile an hour zone, and ten vehicles were going forty-six to fifty miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone. Uh, the numbers, you know, also are similar on the low end and I'm assuming that's got something to do with, uh, uh, proximity to the intersection of North Ave. So maybe that recorder was picking up kind of people going very slow from the turning movement at North Ave onto High Street. Um, but certainly some, uh, better demarcation of the crosswalk on High Street at North would, uh, help inform people that there is a crosswalk there and then some advanced notification signs, uh, something like the crosswalk symbol and the, uh, maybe two hundred feet ahead or three hundred feet ahead would, uh, help to slow people down. Um, so, uh, and then we did, uh, the applicant and I did have a discussion about, uh, would be reasonable as far as potentially doing some time limited spots, uh, as you turn right from North Ave, uh, if, if there were pedestrian kinda coming out of the door of the front of the building, there's only three units coming out of that door, but if a pedestrian was to say walk out of the front door and want to enter the road, if there were some time limited spots that might free up site distance, so somebody turning right from North Ave onto High might see that person a little bit easier, we felt like that was a reasonable compromise that, uh, just doing a time limitation on a couple of those spots would be, would be helpful for the situation. Uh, as we discussed previously, the remainder of the units actually exit out onto the North Ave side of the intersection, um, which is right adjacent to the existing crosswalk setup as it is now. Uh, I did do my request of due diligence with Main Department of Transportation, including their bike ped coordinator and the Region One engineer, um, there weren't any real obvious answers that jumped out at them. Um, I know my dis- in my discussions with Mike Castley, uh, the, this intersection was set up this way for a reason, there were concerns about somebody coming to High Street from North Ave and taking a slip right onto High Street and encountering, you know, a pedestrian at crosswalk if you were to put the crosswalk on the opposite side of the intersection. Um, and then with the revelation that, you know, not all the units actually exit out into a potential block, block crossing, it didn't seem like a crosswalk there was warranted, um, just by the volume of pedestrians that the proposed, uh, use would generate, it just didn't seem to pass the straight face test, so, uh, that's it in a nutshell for me.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. Hill a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Hill, did, what's the site distance coming out of the parking lot, the eleven space parking lot, taking a right on the High Street?
The site distance looking left, taking a right out?
Correction, correction. If you're taking a left out of the parking lot directly across the street with the eleven spot and you were to take a left on the High Street from that parking lot, what's the site distance looking to your right? If, if the car was coming, um, through the intersection of North heading towards, uh, Perkins Court, what's the site distance in there?
Uh, I don't have that information. Um, we've previously discussed this is twenty-five mile an hour zone and our ordinance has a rule, but basically you need ten miles an hour, ten miles, sorry, ten, for every mile an hour of the zone, so you'd want two hundred and fifty feet. I, I think we've discussed this deficient, but I still think we've discussed that there's, there's really not much can, like, be done with it because it's the geometry of High Street, you basically gotta turn and you've got some buildings in the way. Um, so, um, I guess the short answer is that, um, it's an existing parking lot and, uh, the site would be similar in the proposed condition as it is today. But if we can slow people down there, that would certainly help the safety aspect of it.
Mr. Chair, I would definitely add some signage in here, like, uh, Mr. Hill's proposing.
Yeah.
Um, Matt, if I could ask Matt, um, to clarify, Matt, were you assuming that the signage about the advanced warning for the crosswalks, every, all of the signage except for the signage for the limited parking was something that the city was going to take on as part of its normal work on, uh, managing roadways?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. So we've got, unfortunately, we don't like to talk about it a lot, but there's quite a backlog on crosswalk, uh, compliance and these two are amongst those. Um, but certainly, you know, the pedestrian signs, uh, but an UTCD compliant would be required at the crosswalk, certainly with the speed history that we've even looked at just here, I would say the advanced warning signs would fall into that category as well.
So is it fair to say that the only signage you're asking the applicant to do is the limited parking signage?
That's what we've discussed, yes.
Did there be more signage about the, uh, the crosswalk?
Yeah, the, the crosswalk on North Ave definitely warrants, um, you know, the pedestrian crossing symbol, which is the, your, a square or diagonally, uh, sorry, diamond oriented, uh, pedestrian and then, uh, one of those, uh, arrows, uh, pointing down at the crosswalk and that would be, uh, a double-faced sign and it would be mounted, um, proximate to the crosswalk, uh, crossing North Ave. Um, it would not be called for on the North Ave crosswalk, uh, because there's a stop condition there, so, but then, you know, I guess we would, we would work to, to engineer out where we, where we think the, uh, the best location is for the advanced warning.
Any comments from the rest of the board on signage?
This is Tom, I have no other comments for signage.
I'm all set, this is Jack.
No other comments, Jase?
Yeah, so it sounds like everybody's okay with what Matt's proposing for signage?
Well, he's only requiring the, uh, parking signs out in front of the building. I don't know if we can force DPW to put up the, uh, crosswalk signs.
I guess that's the question, I mean, does the city, y- y- you think the DPW has to put those up or does the city do that?
Uh, uh, it's, it's my responsibility to be honest with you.
I mean, the, uh, I was just thinking, that's not a state, or that's not a state responsibility.
Well, yeah, that's correct, it is, it is a priority for road, it's mainly OT, but it's, uh, within the urban compact, so it's the city's responsibility.
Okay.
I apologize, that was my phone squalling, I had to switch phones.
Okay. Mr. Chair, uh, would you like to go through the draft findings of that?
I guess, yeah, if no, if nobody else has anything else to weigh in on, I guess we can.
Okay. All right, uh, so, uh, starting with, um, let's see, we're gonna do combinations, um, so we're gonna do combinations, uh, for not applicable, um, and let's see, uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven, uh, hold on a second, why is this showing up? Oh, dash seven dash, uh, point eleven, natural features, not applicable. Um, the explanation is that the site is currently fully developed with impervious surfaces. Um, the second one in this grouping is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen, shoreland relationship, no improvements are proposed within the shoreland zone. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen, buffering, there's no buffering proposed at this time and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen, airport improvement, encroachment, there are no improvements are proposed within the airport zone. Or motion?
Motion to accept.
Okay, I heard Jack.
Second, Tom.
All right, so Jack. Okay, are we ready for a roll call or do you want any discussion? Jay?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. The second, um, combination is, uh, regarding utilities, um, and I'm putting them all under the same heading, the first is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight, water supply, recommendation is that, uh, the condition is met, excuse me, the standard is met, the explanation is the water district has adequate capacity to serve the property. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine sewage disposal, the recommendation is that the standard is met, the explanation is the sewage district has adequate collection and treatment capacity to serve the property and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten utilities, the recommendation is that the standard is met, the explanation is the electrical and telephone service is adequate to meet the anticipated use of the property. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Ooh, you beat him that much, Tom. Any discussion there, shall I go right to, uh, the call, roll call vote? Okay, Jase?
Yes.
Um, Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Come on, give me a break here. Sorry, I'm fighting with my computer keyboard. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one, utilization of the site, the recommendation is that the standard is met, the explanation is the site is fully developed, drainage on site will be maintained, preserved and improved, is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Um, please speak up if you wanna discuss, otherwise I'm gonna go into a roll call. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Um, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, access to the site, um, the standard is, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, the explanation is that with the condition that signage is provided, limiting two parking spaces in front of High Street frontage to thirty to sixty minutes as approved by the Public Works Director, this condition is met. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second?
Second it, Diane.
I got a question here. I got a, I got a quick question. Do we wanna put something in about the crosswalk signs here?
No, the city's gonna provide those, Lenny.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about, okay, so that does not be part of our motion either?
Correct.
Okay.
Basically, the Public Works Director has said he, it's his responsibility to do it.
Okay.
Okay? Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three, access into the site, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, the explanation is that with the condition that the location of a sign is identified on the plan for the parking lot indicating that the lot is limited to the use of residents of sixty-two High Street and otherwise will be towed, including design details for the sign, the condition is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Jack.
And any discussion? If not, um, Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny, uh, no, Tom is the next one?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four, internal vehicular circulation, recommendation that is that the standard is met with condition, the explanation is with the condition that one additional ADA compliant handicap parking stall is located on the plan, the condition is met. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second?
Jack, second.
Any discussion? The explanation is with the condition that one additional ADA compliant handicap parking stall is located on the plan, the condition is met. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second?
Jack. Second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Jase? Go ahead, Diane.
Who's removing the snow out of these spots? And how often is, like, are they trucking it out every storm? Are they piling it in the back?
That would be a question to direct to, um, uh, Joanne.
Yeah, I'm looking at the ADA compliant part of it. It looks like they need those spots cleaned.
Yep, so. Joanne, I'm assuming that the, um, the landlord would, uh, remove the snow?
Yes, yes, they would. Yeah, there's not much. Yeah, there's not very much space to store snow on site, so they would remove it. Okay, thank you.
Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that crosswalks on the corner of High Street and North Avenue will provide safe and convenient, um, transportation for tenants. Interesting, transportation, yep. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, was that Jase?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? Jase?
Yes.
We're, yes, okay. Uh, Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the existing provisions made for disposals of stormwater will be maintained, preserved, and improved. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Any discussion? Okay, Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven erosion control. Recommendation is that the standard is met. The adic-, uh, the explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for erosion control. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Jack.
Thank you. Any discussion? Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve groundwater protection. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The could just, uh, explanation is that no discharges from the facility are proposed to enter the groundwater system. Is there a?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Thank you. And a second?
Second, Jack.
Any discussion? Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is all exterior lighting will be shielded to direct light downward and will avoid spillage beyond the boundaries of the property. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Jack.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go for it.
There is a, uh, mason jar type lighting in the back alley. Is that going to be replaced with captain shielded or is that considered captain shielded? It is, it's, it's located under the, the decks. Uh, and there's, yeah, that is.
So the deck will shield it?
The deck will shield it. Okay, thank you.
Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen solid waste. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that solid waste will be collected onsite and appropriately disposed of in accordance with state and local laws. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Any discussion? Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping. Um, the most, uh, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that planter boxes will be installed along the High Street frontage of the building to soften the appearance of the development. Um, I'm gonna add something here, give me just a second. And planters with trellises uh, will be installed or will be placed, because that was a non-permanent installation, placed, uh, along the North Street frontage. Uh, no invasive species will be planted.
Motion to accept, Jack.
Second, Tom.
Okay, who won that one? Lenny? Was it Diane or Tom?
Hmm, I think I heard Tom more.
Okay, um, is there any discussion? Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Uh,
Yeah.
Lenny?
Yes.
Okay, so that took care of all of them, guys. Nope, I'm sorry, one more. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen technical and financial capacity. Recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept. Tom.
Is there? Is there a second?
Jack.
Any discussion? Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Okay, so there's your findings. Um, do you want me to read the draft motion?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, planning board accepts the information in the December first, twenty twenty summary report. Um, excuse me, and December fifteen, twenty twenty site plan review committee recommendations. Grants the requested waivers and fines of the proposed minor subdivision and minor site plan applications file number I twenty-nine dash thirty-nine to repurpose the former Calvary Baptist Church tax map lot I twenty-nine dash thirty-nine into nine apartment rental units. Acquire tax map lot I twenty-nine dash sixty-three A for the purpose of providing eleven parking spaces for tenants and carry an easement on tax map lot I twenty-nine dash eighty for the purpose of providing five additional parking spaces for tenants and satisfy the requirements of Article six of the subdivision ordinance and Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One, by January fifth, twenty twenty-one, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, label one eighty A compliant handicap parking stall on the site plan. Two, identify the location of a sign on the parking lot indicating that it is limited to the use of residents of sixty-two High Street and otherwise will be towed, including design details for the sign. C, to provide signage limiting two parking spaces in front of High Street frontage on the building to thirty to sixty minutes as approved by the Public Works Director. Um, and two, provide an AutoCAD submission tied to the main state coordinate system, which is acceptable to the assistant city engineer.
Motion to accept, Jack.
Second, Tom.
Any discussion?
No, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
And the motion passes five oh. Okay, I think that's it for this project.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you. I'll get the plans to you, to the planning department as soon as I can, once I check with, uh, Matt on that limited parking sign.
Sounds great. Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
I mean, Joanne. That's right, you can call me Beth Anne and I'll respond too. Oh, God. We're all getting a little loopy. It's gotta be the snow in the air. I don't know. Mr. Chair, we're done with this item.
Alrighty. Well, I guess the next three items on our agenda are all gonna stay on the table. Is that correct? Because none of them are ready to go.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. Brings us down to the bottom of our agenda, I guess, planning directors report.
Okay, so, um, the only thing I really wanted to talk, well, I, I'm in the, I'm deep into preparing, um, my budget, um, proposals, as all of the department heads are, and I do want to tell you, I am gonna put a very strong focus on, uh, capital improvement, um, proposals for the mill yard, uh, to try to deal with some of the, um, you know, crumbling and very unattractive infrastructure. Um, once I get that, uh, uh, you know, finalized, I, I will share it with you, um, in some format. Obviously, there's no guarantee that those items are going to be, um, approved in the CIP, but I think it's the beginning of, of a focus that the planning department is going to have, um, to try to promote some of those improvements. Um, you know, we've been getting some very specific feedback, um, from both individuals who own mills there as well as those who are, um, potentially interested in redevelopment that, you know, the physical condition right now in the mill yard is holding back, um, interest in investment. Um, so I did want to let you know that. The other thing I wanted to just briefly do is talk with you about the bylaws. Only two of you sent me comments about, um, revisions to the bylaws. Um, the gold stars go to Jack and Diane. Um, here's the, I, what I wanted to do is just briefly describe the areas they suggested that we should have some modification or some new language around. Um, and, um, and, um, if any, any of you, uh, don't agree or um, wanna add anything else, this is a good time to do it. What I will do is take these comments and I will do a draft, um, uh, you know, revising with an underline and strikeout. Um, and that will be presented to you at your first meeting in January. Um, so the first thing, um, came from Jack. He pointed out that in two, section two point three, the status of audio recording, we have shifted from, you know, cassette tapes to, um, to, uh, uh, streaming, excuse me, uh, you know, recording the streaming. Um, and we have that video on, um, on our platform and in fact, probably in this year, we are going to be proposing to put some money in our budget to make sure that they stay on there beyond the five years they were originally intended to be there. So it would make sense to add something about the video recording. Um, Jack also mentioned the Zoom meetings, um, whether that be temporary or permanent, some reference to the governor's order. Um, uh, Diane elaborated on that as well. Um, and so I'm thinking that probably what I'm gonna do is take, uh, um, some of the stuff that was in the protocols that we developed for Zoom meetings and actually translate that into language for the bylaws. Um, uh, Jack's third item was, right now, we have an inclement weather, weather cancellation policy in the bylaws and wondered whether we might consider going to Zoom meetings. I have to tell you, we had a little bit of a panic in City Hall, uh, this morning because none of us could access anything that was on our network. Um, either our files or our email and so, uh, and we couldn't, you know, we, you know, here it was around ten thirty or so and we still weren't there and I'm starting to get nervous that we're not gonna be able to, um, have access to our files as we're going into tonight's meeting and I was considering that we might have to cancel. So it suggests to me that this inclement weather cancellation might also need to be broadened, um, for other kinds of emergencies. Um, and then, uh, Diane, um, made a recommendation for a, a word change in one point, one point, two point four. Um, that's editorial. I'll, I'll comply with that and, um, and see if you like that language better. She also made reference to the Zoom meetings. She also suggested that we should include some language, warning the public not to interfere with electronic devices during the meeting, uh, disruption during the meeting, uh, the muting rules, all of those sorts of things that we've kind of experienced, um, got some experience with in the use of our Zoom product. Um, asked, um, whether we could ask, uh, who audience members are for the record, so, and, and as you noticed in our waiting room, um, Molly typically will ask somebody who has a telephone number, an iPad number, that she doesn't recognize who they are. Um, I did, I did counsel Diane that I think we cannot force people to, um, share their name if they choose not to speak in a meeting. Um, uh, uh, but if they speak, it certainly can require them to provide their name. Um, uh, so far, we've really only had one person who refused to do it and then another person that I noticed at the last meeting just simply ignored Molly's request and whether they ignored it or they didn't figure out how to get off mute is not clear to me. But in general, we haven't had a big problem with that, but I would just be cautious that we can only go so far, I think. Um, you know, just as somebody who you don't recognize walks into a meeting, when we're having a face-to-face meeting, you can't force them to tell you who they are. If they stand up at the podium and the microphone and they wanna speak to the board, then you certainly have every right to require them to provide their name and address. Um, and then she pointed out a spelling error in three point two. Our, our char is affectionately, chair is affectionately known as our char. So we will pull those out. Um, anybody have any issues with those areas or any suggestions for new, additional areas that should be added to the bylaws? I think this is a kind of a predictable list, given our experience of the past year. Um, and we did a pretty thorough job, uh, uh, last year before we went into the COVID crisis, um, uh, making significant modifications to the documents. So I'm not surprised that there are so few modifications here. And I think that's pretty much it for me. Um, uh, you know, I, 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 Jase, I, I, Jason, Diane's terms are up. I wanna encourage you. I think, uh, this Friday is the deadline to get your appli-, uh, applications in. We do have an opening, uh, for, um, uh, Jennifer's position, um, uh, so I would encourage you, if you think of, if you know of anybody who you think might be a good fit, um, uh, to encourage them to apply. That's all.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, uh, the director a question, please?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Is it too early to comment on Jagger Mills?
Uh, is the mill down on Jagger Mill Road?
No, like, do you have any comments about it or do you just wanna let it lie?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, you know, I, my general comment is, is, um, disappointment that the board, that the building deteriorated to the point where the roof collapsed. Um, and, and the city is now taking action, uh, to demolish it. Um, you know, when I arrived in Sanford five years ago, it was in rough shape, um, but I think it may have been salvageable. We got a, we got excited two years ago when the general manager of the LLC that owns the property came forward for a zone change and suggested she wanted to, um, develop the property for mixed use, thought it would be a fabulous addition to that area. Um, and, um, you know, it, it, Sanford has lost so many of its historic structures, um, that it, it just feels like a, a tragedy that we're adding yet one more to the list. Um, so I'm disappointed, um, but I, I definitely understand why the council took the position that it did. It was listed as a vacant and dangerous building quite some time ago. Um, the city had tried to work with the owner and, and required certain modifications and unfortunately, they just, you know, it just didn't happen. So profoundly So profoundly disappointing. Um, you know, really spurs me on to, you know, spend as much time doing proactive work, trying to hold on to some of the buildings that we have left. Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, my primary focus has to be in the mill yard. Um, there's just too much square footage there to be dealt with.
I'm just wondering if going forward, um, even with COVID, um, we had a scheduled meeting with the council supposed to happen, it got canceled. Can we throw this item, um, maybe on that list for the future when that meeting happens?
We can try to, Diane. I, I don't know if it'll make the list, um, because we'll have a limited amount of time and, and certainly there, there needs to be a significant, um, amount of time dedicated to, um, improving communications, I think, between the, the council and the planning board. Um, but I think, you know, when, when we get to that point, and I, and I'm pretty sure the manager does not want to do that until we can meet face-to-face, but I don't know that that's the case, we'll find out. Uh, but I know he's been holding off on, on rescheduling that meeting. Um, and generally, what we'll do is we'll generate an agenda. And so when we get to that stage, one of the things I'll do is come back to you and ask you what items you would like to have on that list. Um, and then my guess is that there'll be way too many items on that list, um, and that the manager will make the decision about which ones to put forward. Um, you know, I think if we end up with be, having enough time to talk about half of them, it would be entirely appropriate to ask for another meeting. Um, and, you know, i- it's going to be more meaningful coming from you than you folks than it is going to be coming from me. Um, so I would encourage you to speak up at that point if there are, you know, if you get a, between the council and the planning board, you get ten items and we have time to discuss four of them. Um, uh, you, you might want to schedule a second meeting. I suspect they're not going to do it the very next month, but, you know, maybe we can get one before, you know, before two too many months go past. Right now, I think everybody's head is just too full of the crisis.
All right, it's just something to think about going forward.
Yep, yep. You know, the other place to bring this up, Diane, is when we start going through the comp plan. You know, we start discussing, um, historic and archaeological resources. And I think, you know, there is a chapter that is required under state law. Um, and it would be entirely appropriate to have that conversation right then and there, and you've got a broader public audience in which to have that conversation. Um, council ultimately, you know, that, that broader audience will help formulate the policies, and then the council, you know, who hopefully will be participating in that, you know, the public conversation as well, ultimately will be the group that's going to adopt the document. Um, um, so I think that, that's a good way to, to sort of enter, you know, you can have this sort of informational conversations, um, directly with the council in the joint meeting, but the place to really nail the policy, um, that's going to guide, um, the community for the, hopefully for the next ten years, will be the comp plan.
Okay, I'll take that into consideration, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, does anybody have anything else under Communications to offer? If not, I got just one thing. I know, I don't know if anybody's aware, but the, uh, the old JNS store is being rebuilt. I guess it's going to be called Harry's Convenience Store. The construction is well underway.
Yep.
I believe they completed the roof today, they got it all covered.
I know, it's amazing.
Good, good timing.
That's what I thought when I went by.
Otherwise, they have an interesting snow removal tomorrow.
Harry's Convenience, and they are in, in the midst of proposing an amendment to add, uh, eight parking stalls in front of the building. Um, it hasn't passed yet, but, but, um, you'll see it when it does come through.
And Molly, please be care, I think we're doing that amendment at the staff level. Please make sure you go back into the record of the review, because there was considerable conversation about parking and, uh, blocking, um, visibility as, as people were coming into that grammar, um, and, uh, Route Four intersection. Um, and just, just, and I suspect it doesn't have anything to do with that, but just to make sure you cover that, to make sure that we're not, um, undoing anything that the Planning Board, um, specifically talked about in that review.
Yeah, yeah, I, I reviewed it, um, at this point, it's largely a, a fire safety concern, and getting the trucks through that air. But, um, what they're proposing now is not violating anything that was approved by the Planning Board.
Good, 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 good.
That's, uh, Mape's, correct?
Yep, yes.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else to offer?
No, I'm getting tired.
Me too.
Thank you for saying that, Jack.
Jack spoke to all of, all of our conditions right now.
I would make the motion to adjourn.
That sounds good. And no work session tonight, right?
No work session tonight.
I'll second the motion.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, for those of you who celebrate Hanukkah. Kwanzaa. And a very Merry Christmas to everyone.
We'll see you in twenty twenty-one, hopefully it'll be a lot better.
Yay.
You're geared. Take care, everyone. I'm really missing our holiday party. See you in the new year.
All right, have a good day.
Happy holidays, good night.